Four oh three. It's Wednesday, maintenance development meeting with Chris Signoli. And I want to thank my colleague, Counselor Walsh for being here. I do, I know, I know. Counselor Walsh might have a few questions, I have a few questions. But I'd still want to give the floor to you, Chris, to let you pretty much explain. I know you had some things as far as changes and things that you had highlighted. If you just want to go over it real quick and then if my colleague has any questions, I'll, you know, I. Glad let her ask you anything first. So with that in mind, go ahead, Chris.
Sure, Counselors, thank you, Counselor Brown. Back in February, when we started preparing for this year's budget, we were noticing the amount of funds that we were. Spending on the mattress recycling that we are required to do. So I started to have conversations with finance and the mayor about increasing the bulk sticker rate. And when we started talking about the money, it was agreed upon to move to sixteen dollars. Basically, two stickers. I didn't want to change any of the other bulk at this point. So I started to go through. That and from an ordinance standpoint, we have two ordinances. We have a solid waste ordinance and then we have the rules and regulations associated with this. And I realized as I started to go through the ordinance, there was a lot of stuff that was in there that was just out of date. Not correct or wasn't reflective of what our solid waste is doing now. Versus probably ten, twelve years ago. Excuse me, we attempted to make some modifications back in. I want to say two thousand and seventeen. Tashina Davis was, I was working through here is before she became city clerk. We were working through some stuff and it never ended up moving forward. For whatever reason at that time. So we went through. The documents and it was my team that went through the law department, looked at it as well. And Jason Garner, who is new at three one one. Was involved in the process as well, based upon a lot of the stuff that he's seen as well. So just to highlight the things that we're looking at is number one. Increasing the cost of the mattresses and box springs to two stickers. Capping the amount of collections that we do. Fifteen total for an address per calendar year. And so if I start collecting fifteen and then fifteen a year, then I'm going to start knowing that they're coming in from out of town. And a maximum of five per appointment. One of the other things that I discussed with ordinance and code. Was the placement of free material on tree belts. So we wanted to define that a little better. We, we have been, had a mandate to wrap mattresses and box springs in plastic. But it was not within the ordinance, so we added that back in. We have also added, modified the start time from six, from, excuse me, from six thirty to six. As certain times of the year, we start a lot earlier, especially when we have a lot of vacations and guys are doing two or three routes. So we pushed that back. We did not have anything in there that talked about revocation of services from people. We had an appeal process, but it didn't define. The authority for stopping service. So we wanted to put that in there. A whole bunch of just small language changes. A lot of our stuff pointed to, talked about going to the incinerator and going to the recycling plant on. Bernie Ave, which we haven't done in fifteen years. So I wanted to update that a little bit. Fines, we had fines in there, but they were all zero. They were all basically blank. So adding in fines, defining better extra bag stickers. We do get a ton of requests for people having extra bags. So we wanted to make sure that that was. The process on obtaining them and the number and all that was taken care of. One of the issues we also discussed was radioactive waste. And so we wanted to get that in there to get, and also be able to get a little more awareness out. Placement of barrels is, is also a thing that, you know, we, I'm going to say we argue about on a daily basis with residents. But also putting in what we have for trash ban items from the DEP now. Of what cannot go in trash. So making sure that that gets back out to the public. And about the, the whole issue surrounding nine payment of trash fees. Where we, we, the DPW is not the collector of that. But one of the issues that we wanted to put in there is. It ends up being a lien on your property, the same way your. Excise tax and all of that, if you don't pay it. However, there was nothing in there that if after X amount of period of time. Getting three one one in or DPW when the loop on who hasn't paid. So if somebody's calling for a bulk appointment, or if they're calling for household hazardous waste appointment. We will now be able to let them know that, hey, just want to let you know, you haven't paid your trash fee. So you need to get up to, up to speed on that. And just make sure that residents know, because right now if a resident doesn't pay. We don't stop service. However, there really isn't any coordination with some of the people. With regard to letting them know, you know, when they call for a service. So we don't want to call them back and say, hey, just by the way. So we, we, we want to make sure that that information is available to us. A lot of just cleaning up language that we have two documents that wanted to make sure always said the same thing. And also the process for getting additional barrels. We have a ton of requests for additional barrels. And how that is handled. And the other thing is that we do, as we talk about revocation, we've done that. A number of times, really in egregious moments. But defining what that appeals process is. And as an example, I just want to mention, we discontinued service for a property owner. Where we were upwards of forty mattresses and, you know. Five refrigerators and, and all of that sort of stuff. And, you know, we defined the process for them. And we kept having to point them back to what the process is for appealing and appealing and appealing. So we want to make sure that that's in the ordinance. So whenever anybody calls for any of these things, whether it's us or three one one. We provide them a copy of the ordinance and then they have all the information that they need if they have a question on it. And our goal on this, from a bulk standpoint, if we're talking about the mattresses. The increase would probably not go into effect. If we're in front of the city council on this, I believe the seventh. And then there's a meeting on the twenty first, so we're going to need the three votes. I probably wouldn't enact it until the beginning of December, possibly January. Because I want to make sure that any appointments that people already have. Because sometimes when we get in the fall, we may be, you know, four weeks out. For, or, you know, two, 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 it might be four weeks. But if we're out that far, I want to make sure that everybody who's getting. Bulk service for these things knows what they have to get. And if somebody, you know, makes an appointment the night before that this gets approved and it's out six weeks, I want to make sure that they don't get. You know, stuck in the middle of it. So we'll put it out until a point in time that we know. From an appointment standpoint, but the public aspect of this to get out to the residents is something that. Once it's approved, obviously we'll do it. I've already had inquiries from the media. So I want to get the information out to them as well. And then we would probably be, as I mentioned at the meeting. Most likely sending out flyers or attaching flyers to barrels as we move through. Probably the four to six weeks after. The approval is done through the city council. That's kind of a highlight of everything where we are. But where we started with this was really from the finance side. We're looking at over two hundred thousand dollars in a line item that used to be zero. And we are now spending about a hundred and forty five thousand dollars. When you get rid of the income to dispose of the mattresses. So this will not make it revenue neutral, but it will make it better. For the city financially, but I also think at the same time, it's going to stem the amount of illegal stuff that's coming into the city. As I mentioned at the meeting, we used to collect about twenty five hundred mattresses, box springs a year. Now we're up to seventy five hundred. It's held that way for almost two years now. So I'm a little. Dubious about stuff coming in from out of town. And anytime I'm seeing a huge amount of requests, you know, whether it's five or eight or ten mattresses to be collected. Ninety nine percent of the time, it's coming from a property management company that owns the, owns the home rather than a homeowner. Or it's a homeowner or a owner who owns multiple properties in the city. So we know that some people may be playing games and we're trying to find a way to stem that a little bit. If we can go from seventy, seventy two hundred and fifty down to five thousand. You know, that makes it a lot, lot, lot more manageable. And just for everybody's purposes in surrounding towns to get rid of mattresses. In Chickaby, it's twenty dollars, but you got to bring them to the transfer station. Wilbraham is forty, you got to bring them to the transfer station. Long Meadow is twenty and thirty, you got to bring them to the transfer station and Ludlow is sixty five. And you have to bring them to the transfer station. So we're not pricing ourselves out of this. I think we're still going to be cheaper than everybody else. But I want, do want to stem the tide of getting the illegal stuff in here. Because there's no way, the way that I see it, that all of a sudden, you know, we're taking in ten thousand. You know, we've gone from twenty five hundred to seventy five hundred, that's five thousand in two years. Over, for each year, that's ten thousand mattresses. That's a lot of mattresses. And I know when people are buying mattresses. You know, vendors are taking them, but they want to charge, you know, twenty, thirty, forty dollars to, to get rid of them. You know, a lot of them will just say, hey, I'll pay eight bucks and put it out on the tree belt, make it cheaper. So the language that we've, we've changed in there is really just update. The main issue. Is really from, from a public standpoint, is going to be the increase from the eight to sixteen dollars. Or two stickers for this. So that's kind of the highlights on that. So, you know, at this point, happy to, you know, go through any questions, comments or concerns. That any of you have on the, on the document.
Thank you, Chris. Very informative. I want to recognize my colleague, Counselor Maria Perez. I see she's joined. I don't know who's the iPhone. But I, I want to turn, I'll turn it over to my colleague first for any concerns or questions she might have. Counselor Walsh.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Brown, for having this meeting. Because, you know, when it was first presented on the council floor, I thought then, and I think now, there's an awful lot to observe. In this, and I got to stay straight out. I am not a fan of taking away services that people think they are entitled to through their taxes. So I have to know exactly what you're talking about. I don't like the idea of telling people how much they can put out on the tree belt and things like that. I mean, I think it's going to be a tough year to be raising fees. So I have a lot of concerns about what it is you're actually trying to do. And I know about Maria, but we all know what the economy is like. And to limit things that people are used to as citizens, I'm really concerned about it.
Well, and Counselor, we're not limiting anything.
No, but you said you were gonna, you know, you talked about people putting things out on the tree belt. Why would we limit what, what people want to do?
No, we're not limiting it. All we're doing is what, what the trend is over the past year, especially through social media. Is people are putting a ton of stuff out on tree belts and basically saying, hey, come get it, it's free.
Yeah, but I don't object to that.
Oh, no, I don't either. The problem is the stuff is now sitting there for three or four weeks. And when, and again, the enforcement of it isn't the DPW, it usually ends up being either police ordinance or code. And the issue that we're running into is. People are saying, well, I'm putting it out, it's for free. So they're not, especially they put out a couch that's going to sit there for three weeks. You know, that, and that's the issue. It's really, it's in violation of code and ordinance anyways. All we're trying to do is get people aware that just by putting something out on the tree belt and saying it's free. And, you know, it just can't sit there for, you know, three, four, five weeks. One of the big, one of the, a big increase in phone calls that we are getting. From neighborhood associations is this type of thing that, hey, can you send somebody from code over because this person's had, you know. In a lot of cases, people put mattresses out and just put free. And, you know, then they sit there. And then we get a call from the neighborhood saying, hey, can you, you know, send out Clean Cities to go pick them up? So we're not trying to limit it. We're just trying to control more from an appearance standpoint. That if people are going to do it, good, but you're just not going to be able to have stuff sit out on your tree belt for. You know, three, four, five weeks, which then makes the neighbors upset. So, you know, we, we're all for it. And if people can get rid of stuff, God bless them. But we want to make sure that it gets controlled.
Yeah, well, I, I can see that, but I can see we're also that, you know, maybe the resident, after three or four weeks, it's their responsibility. I don't mind the two stickers for the mattresses because I see them all over. I'm sure we all. But I don't want to take away anything that our citizens are used to.
Which I, in this, I don't think we, I don't think anything that, I don't think we're taking anything away.
There's so much to absorb.
Yeah, there's, there is. The, the social media aspect of this, there's, there's a couple websites out there, like one of them's called Free Springfield. Or I can't remember the other name of it, but it's like people just post stuff and they put it out, out front of their house. And, you know, people come and get it because, you know, whether it's, you know, something, a crib for kids or. You know, something, a lot of toys and things like that, which is fine. You know, if, if people can get rid of them for nothing, God bless, and people can get stuff for nothing, God bless. It really becomes down to the locations of, you know, them just sitting out there for a long, long, long period of time. And I mentioned the mattresses because then we get a phone call and it's like, hey, I'm going to put a sticker on it. And it's like, we get there and the thing's been sitting there for five weeks, it's soaked, we can't pick it up. You know, then we tell the resident that they got to get rid of it on their own. You know, then it becomes a little bit of a fight. So we're just trying to stem that. Ahead of time, that if you're going to do that as a resident, just, you know, pay attention that, you know, the stuff just can't sit there forever.
Well, I can see tightening up some language, but I can't, I can't see restricting. As I said, some of the things that people are used to, because I think it's going to be a tough year. I don't want to be increasing. Anybody's fees more than we have to.
Could anyone hear me?
I can hear you now, Counselor Perez.
Okay, I'm calling from the iPhone because I'm driving back to Springfield. Thank you, Mr. Press, Share Person. One of the issues that I have right now that I don't have on document, what are the process that we're going through? That we're looking to be approved. Because there's a combinations of different things in the process. So I could able to explain to my constituents. When it comes, Chris, to the seven thousand mattress that you've been talking about in the five thousand. How, how do, see, one of the problems, and I know for fact, well, one, I have a lot of issue with that. But one of the problems that I've seen is that sometimes at night. People pass by a lethal mattress and then necessarily, and this is what I've been hearing from the constituent. It's not from the property, it's not from that property. So that's one of the issues that has been appointed to myself because people are dumping all over. When it comes to people from other cities, town and city. Dumping, the control of it is that I don't understand. Because it's not in a process that I could comprehend and read to explain to, to my constituents. And I think that I heard at the last meeting. Not only the increasing of the recollection of mantles, but it was going to be a fine, that it was going to be issue. So I need those processes to be clarified in order for me to understand them. Because we have a combination of so many items in the process. And I want to be more, so I could explain. I think, I don't know how the colleagues feel. But that's how I feel right now in order to comprehend approved all this. Thank you, Mr. Share.
The, the, the item that I would say with regard to mattresses coming from out of town. Those numbers that I'm talking about are mattresses that not illegally dumped. These are people making appointments, you know, everything's, the, the mattresses are wrapped properly and all that. That's the increase we're seeing. I, I, I talk a lot with Tommy McCarthy because he, through Clean Cities, they do a lot of the illegal stuff around the city. He has not seen a huge increase in that. But the increase that I'm really talking about is not the illegal dumping, it's not any of that. It's really just, you know, people making appointments to get rid of the material. And as I said, when I start doing research. It does seem to be a lot of, like I said. Multiple owners or multiple property owners or actually property management company. And in one case, you know, they, they said point blank, it's cheaper in Springfield, so we bring them. And, you know, so that, that's the issue with that. The other thing with regard to fines that you were talking about, Counselor. I'm just going to flip through real quick and see if I can find one. I'm just looking through real quick because there's a bunch of them that I added in here. Oh, and all the fines that we put in there. Are items where, when we go to dispose of something. And we get fined. So if a resident has in their trash, as example. Three or four bags squeezed in of yard waste. When we get to the disposal facility in Agawam, we are getting fined for that. And, and or we then have to go separate the material. So when we're seeing people putting illegal materials into the trash. You know, from my perspective, not going to be finding them right away. You know, there's going to be a notification of that, that, hey, you got something in there. And that's what we do now. We put the stickers on the barrels. If you have something in there that's wrong, we put a sticker on it, there's a notification. You have to correct it. And when we go back the next time, if it's fixed, no big deal. On the fine side is that when we're running into properties that do this over and over and over and over. Where we at least have the ability to have that fine. Because what we end up doing is just not picking up their trash. Because if it's mixed and whether it's yard waste or recycled material in the trash or trash material in a recycle. You know, we don't get too crazy, you know, somebody's got a pizza box that's not supposed to be there. But we're talking about big stuff. That when we bring it to the facility, we are going to get fined. And we probably pay about ten thousand dollars in fines a year. For the materials, simply because stuff comes out of, and, you know, we're, we're inspecting a lot, but we're not inspecting everything. So we do know that there's going to be stuff when it's dumped that. We're going to incur some, some fines on, but we try to minimize that. And most of the fines are around illegal activity. You know, we're not finding people because they have the barrel in the wrong spot. Or, you know, they put their barrel out late. It's going to be the type of thing, they're putting illegal stuff. And that's why I added a lot of the ban, the banned items from the state into this ordinance. So people have a better understanding of what they can and can't put. What we do a lot is that we'll say to a resident, we'll put a sticker on. Get rid of this thing. And if you can get rid of it by the end of the day, we may even come back and get it. But mostly we deal with a lot of. Just bad stuff that shouldn't be put in trash or in the recycling, it should go in the other. And that's what we're looking at on that. In the ordinance, all the languages in there, just that the, the fine itself was blank. So I don't, I don't even know what year that, I'm guessing it was probably like two thousand and twelve, the last time that was done. I think it was actually in eleven when some of those were done. So those are the fines that we're looking at. They're labeled throughout the, throughout the document as well.
Right, thank you, Chris.
Can I ask, what, what is the stuff banned? Okay.
Chris. I, I got a couple of questions. When you, when you're talking about the increases, like we're talking, what, sixteen, sixteen dollars?
Yeah, eight to sixteen.
Okay, so my thing is, this was type of, this was funding that, and the fines. This, this is funding and money that we, we, we weren't able to obtain in the past. Like this is something new to kind of like offset some of our costs, is that correct?
Correct. Just to go, to go back, say, three, four years, Counselor. We did not have a line item for recycling. We now have to pay for recycling. And we didn't have a line item for, for mattresses. So we've probably increased our, our budget by over a million dollars. Through these mandates that are being put on us by the state, especially on the recycling side. So, yeah, you know, we're trying to, my, my goal is not necessarily capture revenue. I was just kind of hoping to stem the tide of a lot of the stuff coming from outside the city.
And, and, and where I, where I go, where, where I'm going with, because I do a lot of budgeting and things like that, so I'm familiar. This is something where we have a great opportunity as a city to do a Peter Pay Paul type deal. These are funds and resources that we never obtained. I would like to see any of the, the, maybe out of the sixteen dollars. Can we take two of it and give it to the seniors for their trash, trash?
That, 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 that wouldn't be up to me. That'd be something we'd have to talk to, we'd have to talk to the mayor about that.
Because sometimes what happens is these, this is a money that's going to hit the city. These were bills that's going to hit the city. But I think this would be a great way now, so say like the fines, we never collected money for those fines. Well, what if we take ninety percent and give it to the city and pay it, but we still got ten percent? Give ten percent to the seniors. I mean, can we, is there a way we can do that? Because it was never there. So say, out of a hundred percent of the fines. And we don't even need a hundred percent of the fines. I mean, why can't, can we, can we now help some of the less fortunate? I, I first want to start with our seniors. Maybe we can remove our senior trash fee. Maybe the seniors don't have to pay. I wouldn't even mind get added another dollar or two to that sixteen dollars if it'll go to the seniors. Is that something that we could do?
I, I add something, I can definitely talk to the mayor about it. Because really what it ends up being is when we get to the point of doing budgeting, as we do every year. And we look at, because right now the trash fee goes from, you know, it's a fifty, or fifty dollars from ninety to fifty. So if we were able to collect X amount of dollars. That, then that senior discount, instead of being a fifty dollar discount or a forty dollars, I'm losing track of which ones which. It could be a, you know, fifty five dollar discount or a sixty dollar discount. And my guess, my guess, my guess on that, Counselor, would probably be that. We would probably want to see, you know, the first year of what that money would be. You know, and if we enacted it now, when I say now, if we enacted it, say for January first. You know, we would have a good four, five, six months in the budgeting process to be able to see that.
And then, you know, like, like I said, and then that's still another revenue. So I think a lot of, what, what scares me. Is just still also the actual introduction of maybe some of the people who weren't paying the trash fee. How are you going to implement the people who aren't, who haven't paid and they need to pay? Some of the people might not be able to pay. Are they going to be able to possibly get waivers or anything like that? All of it's up and they're going to get hit with a bill, you guys haven't paid. I know we haven't enforced it, but now we are. And if you don't, are you kind of like, nothing you can do? I mean, what, 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 what are we going to do for people who probably unfortunately maybe couldn't afford it or?
Yeah, and, and what, what I'm looking at is. The way that the ordinance is written, we are not going to stop trash service. And, because we don't, and it just ends up as a lien. But the language that I'm putting in there is that we're able, we want to be able to have the information and have a discussion with somebody. You know, right now, you know, say you haven't paid your trash fee. Rather than pick on you, I'll pick on myself. I haven't paid my trash fee. I call up for a bulk appointment. All they do is check to see that I'm eligible. That, you know, because I'm, and I'm in the right, you know, home and I'm, you know, my, I'm trash fee eligible. Making sure I'm not in a four family house or an apartment building. I want to be able to change that internally so that we know if the person has paid the fee or not, so we can at least tell them. Because I am finding out now that a lot of people who haven't paid trash fees. There's a whole host of reasons. Obviously, there's people who just can't afford it for whatever reason. Then there are people, there's a lot of people who are renters or they are new property owners and they bought things. And the person before them didn't pay the trash fee. One of the things we are finding out a lot with a lot of the properties that are being transferred in the city. That people had open liens against the property that weren't collected as part of the closing process. So all of a sudden, we get a call from a homeowner. That, you know, hey, I want to set up a trash account. And we find out that, you know, they haven't paid for five years. So we want to be able just to go through a notification process, let people know. Because when they're going to find out about this, it's probably three or four years down the road when they get their tax bill. You know, and they're going to get their tax bill and they're going to go, what do you mean? I, I, I don't remember anything. So we want to be able to do a notification. We, we are not going to stop collecting. And I think the only time we would stop collecting if it became something horribly egregious. But we, we are really looking to get into the notification. So people, a lot of people get notified, and especially the new people that they get notified. Because some of these new property owners now, we've had a lot. uh, that they get notified, because some of these new property owners now, we've had a lot of transactions in the city who find out, you know, four months, five months into it that, you know, oh crap, you know, my previous, the previous owner didn't pay his trash fee for six years and now they're coming after me. Um, and uh, again, that's more on the collection side. I don't get involved with it, but we want to be able to get the information out to people and let them know. Because in some cases, people go, you know, oh crap, I forgot to pay it, you know? Let me make sure I get that taken care of. So we want to make sure that that gets done.
So I have a question.
I'm gonna let, go ahead, uh, Councilor Perez.
I have a question. Thank you. Um, I have a question because then the issue is we have to have a combination of procedure with the uh, collection department. Uh, and the question is, if people owe any um, type of um, amount, are they going to put a lien on the house? What's the procedure to make them pay? I mean, I want to be clear on that matter because that was another question that it was asked. So what's the procedure in place if you have those type that haven't paid for many years? How are you going to make them pay in another way?
Yeah, that, that, that ends, it's, it's not through DPW. It ends up more so through the collector's office and uh, uh, controller's office. But if somebody hasn't paid, you know, if you haven't paid your property tax, or I shouldn't say property taxes, but your excise tax or any other fees that you may have with the city after a period of years and, and I'm going to say three, four, five years, it's a long period of time. It ends up becoming a lien and it ends up getting added to your taxes uh, when you get your next tax bill uh, for that. And uh, one of the reasons why we want to do it this way too, from a notification is that a lot of the people that will, you know, we have a lot of renters in the city, obviously. So we call, you know, a renter calls us to pick something up on the bulk and, you know, we mentioned to the renter, hey, trash fee hasn't been paid for this. He can then at least let the owner know. Because a lot of these owners who are, you know, absent from that particular property don't know or know that they haven't paid and just, you know, uh, now the uh, uh, the tenants get stuck with it. But after a period of three, four, or five years, uh, there's a whole notification process and um, it ends up becoming a lien and, and placed on your taxes.
So in one, and the second part of that is that, you know, I'm not so sure in the support of this, because when I see someone, they have a twenty unit apartment and I only have a house and the taxes have risen. Um, they only paying sixteen and here I'm paying sixteen and he have twenty mattresses out because of that twenty unit. Um, and the comparison is we need to put a mechanism in place that what applies to a person that has one house shouldn't be the same thing of a person that have twenty units that they receiving rent. So you understand what I'm saying? We need to look at that also, you know?
The only thing I would say on that counselor, we are not picking up anything from any, I'm going to say property that has more than three units. Uh, if, if, if somebody has, if somebody has an apartment building, the way the ordinance was from way back, they have to have private trash service. So we have, and one of the things that I did add in there that I didn't mention is we have a lot of, I'm going to say fly by night trash companies out there. So one of the things is that we want to be able to check with some of these people is that they have a certified hauler that is taking their trash and it's not just the guy down the street with a pickup truck uh, that's bringing it somewhere. So anybody that's three units or more is not, they're not paying a trash fee. Uh, they are not eligible for trash, recycling, bulk, household hazardous waste. Uh, any of the services from the city from a DPW trash service standpoint. So uh, and, and we get calls all the time from, from these property owners who say, hey, I just have a couple of things. Can you come get them? No. We're not going to come get them because we do know that the trash fee is um, uh, supplementing, you know, this. And if you're not paying the trash fee, we're not going to give you that opportunity. And that's been part of the ordinance for a while. So those bigger places, they're having to get uh, uh, private haulers to take all of their stuff away. So we're dealing with three, three units or less uh, as part of this. And we have about forty three thousand customers uh, that we pick up weekly uh, that are part of that. Uh, before I came on board, we were picking up some at some other places and I, that was almost up to like forty eight thousand locations. So, you know, it's been reduced down to about forty three for those three families and below. So we don't have to deal with the uh, the apartment buildings or any of those problems. Especially the apartment buildings where people move out and they dump everything back by the dumpsters and then, you know, uh, the, the apartment building's got to take care of it, which happens a lot. I'm dealing with one on Belmont Ave right now.
And the other part is we increasing from eight dollars to sixteen dollars. And I, am I correct?
Yeah, just, just, just for mattresses.
Just for mattresses.
Yeah. So if you're putting, I'm sorry, if you're putting anything else out, that's still eight dollars.
Okay. And okay, just for mattresses and anything else? The sofa is still eight dollars? I just want the community to know all this information. Just the mattresses and how many?
Mattresses and box springs uh, will go from eight to sixteen dollars, basically two stickers. And everything else that we collect is going to stay at eight.
So for point of clarification, if I'm disposing my box spring and mattress, so it's sixteen and sixteen, correct?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, that's the other thing that I'm looking at. You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Um, 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 because then we have to be sensitive and I will say and put it up in public. People are just um, voicing out the, the, the increase of homeowners taxes. Um, so we need to talk about, I don't know, uh, about this more because then I could see if we wouldn't increase in incrementals. But we are saying we just doing it and we just doubling that um, um, from the get go. Um, and we have to be sensitive to that. You know what I'm saying?
Oh, absolutely.
So.
I'm sorry, counselor. I'll let you finish.
No, 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 no. Um, I just want to bring that as, and you know, my concerns that I have that we not doing incrementals like let's start from eight to ten and then having a venue there, we are doubling automatically. And when is, if, if this all passes, if it passed, um, we are going to be enforcing and starting in December?
Uh, prob, I'm going to probably say somewhere between December first and January first.
And, and then that was my other concern, because now you got to do budgeting. You know what I'm saying?
Right. That, that's, that's why I, I want to do it because I want to be able, when people call for an appointment, we want to be able to say to them, hey, we want to let you know, you know, because they tell us exactly what they're putting out. Uh, for the most part. And we want to say to them every time somebody makes an appointment, hey, and a lot of people will put stuff out and they'll put an extra one or two items. No big deal. We don't get too crazy about that. But we want to be able to tell people, hey, if you're going to make an appointment now for a mattress, you're going to require two stickers uh, to be able to let them know. Uh, because a lot of people, most people call us for an appointment before they even go buy stickers. Because they want to know when the.
They want to know when.
So, um, that's, that's the, the way we were looking at it. And the other thing that I was kind of trying to avoid is having to do, having to get special stickers just for mattresses. Uh, and the reason why I say that, as I mentioned, people will put stuff out uh, overnight. People will come and take them, you know, you put out your grill. Somebody's probably going to pick that up before uh, we come to pick it up because people are taking metal like crazy. Uh, so if you buy two stickers or if you buy a sticker for a mattress uh, and somebody comes and takes it, or you have something else out and you get stuck with stickers that are only good for a mattress, there's nothing you're going to be able to do about it. So that's why I was thinking is that if they have two stickers and somebody comes and takes the stick, takes the material in the next couple of days before, uh, that way they can use them for, for any other bulk item.
But it has to be specific for, for mattress, correct?
Yeah, that's why we're saying if it's mattresses, it's got to be two stickers versus, you know, creating its own ticket at a different price and that way that sticker could only be used for a mattress. Uh, that way, if you go and go to the store and buy five tickets and you end up not putting mattresses out, you can use those five tickets for anything else. But if you put that out and you say, well, then I don't need it. I gave it away. Now you're stuck with a sticker you can only use for a mattress. So that's why we were trying to make it be able to use for, for all of the items. And then also comparing it to all the other towns on their disposal uh, where we think a lot of these things are coming from.
And I, and my concern is we're looking at other towns, but I, I serve as a city councilor, the poorest in the state right now. And those are the concerns that I have. Um, 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 I am very concerned when it comes to um, this ordinance and it's still, I got room for questioning, because I don't want us to start this ordinance and see more dumping because of the increase. You know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
Um, I, I, I am very concerned about that also, because I deal with that every day. And then if I'm increasing and this household doesn't have the, the, the sixteen and sixteen, guess what? That box spring mattress is going to wind up. You know what I'm saying? So those are the concerns that I, I, I have right now when it comes to the increasing and the dumping, because we might get some financial resource here, but could that increase the dumping? Um, that is a theoretical question and to be tested, but those are the constraints that I have right now, because I'm dealing with that every day in my ward. So, um, I'll look more in detail in the ordinance, Mr. Chair. Um, but I still got quite room for questioning and I think at this point from the shares being part of the committee, we need to have a, a combination of the collection and, and DPW together, because there's some room for other questions as well um, in terms of the ordinance. Um, um, so that will be my point of view. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Perez. And um, I had, uh, Chris, I had a couple, made a couple of questions. As far as you saying, uh, fifteen, is it fifteen pieces? Or fifteen trips? Like say, for, say for instance, you know, you had a couple of couches, you've got a new living room set, you, a bedroom set um, for, for say two, two of your beds, that's like two, four, that's, I mean, you're almost right to fifteen with, with, you know, you know, is it fifteen pieces or per stop?
Fifteen is just mattresses.
Okay.
Yeah, because, because what, what, you know, the average family, if they bought brand new mattresses and box springs for the entire house.
Yeah, they would, yeah.
That's not fifteen.
Yeah.
All of the, all of the other, yeah, all of the other items, you know, those are uncapped. Uh, and I'm not changing anything on that, because we really don't have too much of an issue with that uh, with that stuff. It's really the mattresses. And those are the ones that we're seeing the, you know, come collect twenty, twenty-five, thirty type of thing. And, you know, when we see somebody, when we get a call from somebody that says, hey, can you pick up five refrigerators? You know, we have a conversation with them now. You know, we're, we're doing that now. It's like, you don't have five refrigerators in your house. So, uh, but so right now, the, the cap that we're putting out is just for the mattresses and box.
For the mattress. Now, when you're talking, also when you're talking about the wrapping portion, um, what are you requiring the actual people, the, the constituents to, to wrap it and just a, a regular? What, what kind of plastic is it?
It's, it's, uh, they're readily available, you know, Rockies, Home Leap Depot, Lowe's has them. I want to say they're like two dollars, something like that. It, there's, they're, they're plastic wraps. Uh, and.
Chris, let me explain why. So I don't mean to cut you off, brother.
Yeah.
Um, because what happens is I would hate, and I'm just looking for the actual city employee safety when it comes to bed bugs and things like that. I know they have specialized um, actual plastic that you put them in and um, and, 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 and now they're sealed correctly. I would hate um, for there to be a discrepancy where someone's still putting plastic on and uh, you know, a lot of times those beds are, they're there, some of them got bed bugs. And now, now you have the employees and you know what? Bed bugs, you know, you got them with a improperly wrapped bed and now they're full of bed bugs on them.
Yeah, the, so. The issue associated with wrapping, we started that, excuse me, at the beginning of COVID uh, because it was also a regulation. It is now a mandated regulation uh, from the recycling standpoint. We, we don't have too much of an issue with that. We really don't, you know, every, because when somebody calls, we tell them you got to get one. You know, if they're available at Rockies, they're available at, you know, a, a number of different places. And we haven't had, we've been doing it for like about three and a half, four years now and really hasn't been, that hasn't been too much of an issue. Our guys love it because again, they're not having to touch some of these bad ones that you see.
Yeah.
Uh, and from a um, uh, recycling standpoint, you know, the mattresses and box springs, you know, there's metal in them, there's obviously textile and there's obviously wood in some of the box springs. All that gets separated later. So you know, every mattress is going to have something crazy with it to begin with. Um, and as long as they're wrapped, that becomes the handling thing prior to them getting to recycle. And we've done doing that, like I said, four years, and it really hasn't been too much of an issue um, with residents.
And Chris, I have one more thing. I had a lot of constituents who um, they've called to get bulk removal and um, they've been told it's a backup. Is there a delay for some reason? It seems, I, I mean, I've heard it from everybody in the community. I've been getting complaints saying that um, they're saying that they have to wait a certain amount of time. Is there a reason? Is there a stall or something? But what's going on?
And, and, and I'm going to tell you, it probably is going to depend on where you are in the city. Uh, certain areas, uh, I'm going to say Fridays as an example. Fridays have, probably has uh, Friday and I think it's Tuesday or Wednesday, I'm not sure. But the, those days have the biggest amount of collections that we deal with. So if you were to call today for a Friday appointment, when I say appointment, we're going to pick up your bulk on the day that we pick up your trash. So, you know, if you have a trash pickup on Friday, that means we're going to be picking up your bulk on Friday. So we work in that area. And really it depends on, we are now capping it. We have sixty-five appointments a day uh, that we, that we are doing uh, for bulk. Uh, and the other problem that we have run into, electronics uh, have to be put into a separate truck. Regular bulk is in a truck, mattresses are in a truck. So we used to be able to put out three or four vehicles and pick up everything. Now I'm putting out three vehicles and they're just picking up what they're picking up. Because per DEP, I now have to bring those. So if you have out in front of your house, a couch, a mattress and a television, there's going to be three different trucks picking that up uh, going to three different places. So we went from about seventy-five appointments down to sixty-five appointments. And really it's dependent upon how many appointments that we have, whether you're out one, two, three, four weeks. And the other item that comes in is what we have for um, holidays. Um, when we have holidays that fall during the week, not this year, not going to, we don't have too many of them, but when we have holidays, um, you know, and I always tell people, average, you're probably looking at two to three weeks uh, for an appointment. Fridays, Fridays are definitely the worst, simply because just uh, we have a lot of single family homes uh, or excuse me, a lot more customers on that day and it just tends to be the one that we are utmost on um, on that. But it does happen, we're probably looking to sometimes two to three weeks uh, depending upon appointments, but we're doing sixty-five uh, a, a minimum of sixty-five, probably sixty-five to seventy a day uh, of bulk collections around the city. And as I said, we now have to separate that stuff, which has really started to slow us down. But that started, you know, three, three plus years ago. Um, so that's always been a little bit of a problem that we have.
And, and, and I, I thank you, Chris. It sounds, now, I just, um, you know, I, I don't know kind of like how I'm kind of, you know, I know it's something we have to do. But I'm always a little bit, I'm sure my colleagues and myself would be a little bit happier if we can now, uh, just me personally, you'll get my support i- i- if you can help maybe um, the seniors. Let some of the seniors, let some of us younger people um, take some of that brunt for the seniors. You know, if we can now divvy out some of those, you know, some of those new uh, funding sources um, and we can give some of them, if you guys can work out something to give them some of the relief, I'm, I'm all for it, you know, because I do know we got to balance the budget. Um, but I think as far as the seniors, they, they should benefit based on when the city get funding. I, I, if we can work on that, Chris, I would like to definitely work on making even a tax fee, fee go away for seniors if we can. You know, if anyone can be creative enough to do it, I know you can do it.
Well, that's, that's something that, you know, I'll talk to finance and the mayor about, because as I said, we, you know, we were looking at this a lot from a finance perspective.
Perspective.
But if it, if it, if we can get it under control, there, then we can.
Then we can.
Getting a big echo. We can, they can have taken care of with the uh, uh, with that. Getting a big echo, we can then get it taken care of with the uh uh with that as well, so I'll I'll definitely talk to the mayor about that.
I appreciate it, Counselor Perez, do you have anything?
Yeah, for point of information, I I second the echo the same feelings as my colleague. Um, so, yeah, I definitely, if we could work something out, that would be per great, thank you.
If you make it sixty-four years old, that that means I'm eligible.
I think we won't be able to afford that, we'll have to.
You don't want to know what I put in the trash.
Bye bye, I gotta go to another Zoom meeting.
All right, thank you.
But um I'm but I that's all, I mean, this has been a great meeting, it's always a pleasure, Chris, you always do a fantastic job. Um, I think this is this is something that's very big for the city and very important. Um, I know a lot of people are unhappy about the trash fee and everything like that, but there's there's things now, we can still work together and help. Um, so this is something I know a lot of people um ask me about and you always do a great job, Chris, um, I always talk highly of you.
Thank you, thank you. What the the other thing that I was gonna mention, counselor, I'll um I'm away next week, uh what I'm gonna do is uh I'm gonna make sure through Gladys and everything that this stays on the agenda for the seventh. And I'll have a conversation either with you or and probably with you on that Monday when I get back. You know, if we need to, because we have two meetings in October, so if we do need to push it out, you know, kind of table it for lack of a better term. Or we can get it through the first step and still make the changes on that. You know, I'll have a conversation with you about that uh on that day, but I'm gonna, I just want to, because sometimes on these ordinances, when they get tabled, they sometimes disappear from the agenda and I just want to make sure uh just process wise that everything's going the way it's supposed to.
No, I would never, for me, this this is, this is, this is stuff that um to me, if you got, people said, hey, I want everyone to kick in two, three dollars and we're gonna give it to the seniors, I'm all for that, that's not gonna go anywhere, you know, so um, I definitely, um, with with that in mind, I'm gonna wrap this up, um.
Beautiful.
It, I need to talk to you too, Chris, about that other thing that you wouldn't help me out with, um, if you can reach out whenever you get a chance.
Yeah, I went down, Steve wasn't around, I didn't see him yesterday and I wasn't in the office a lot today, so I'm definitely tomorrow.
He made the call, um, and he never got back again, but he did call today to the actual person, so you know, I don't, I don't know what's going on, but you know, I do, I do appreciate you.
No problem, counselor.
But with that in mind, always a pleasure and um with that, I'll enjoy and join the meeting, thank you.
I appreciate it, counselor.